So, again, there are three missing and we will move forward. I'm going to dispense with the invocation. We're going to move directly to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Moving on the agenda, citizens' comments and public hearings. Again, this is comments from citizens that will be no more than three minutes, or I'm going to try to keep it to three minutes. Anybody have any topic that they want to address, council? Going once? Going twice? Three times, the citizens' comments hearing is closed and it's 7:04. That's a first, so that's a good one. Moving on to council member comments. Jase, you want to start?
So, hope to see everybody literally all over the town. Other than that, I hope everybody has a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, if I don't see you. And that's all I got.
Same. I mean, see everybody on the 14th, there's lots of things going on.
Lots of things.
Yeah, if you don't see me, I don't know, I must have gone out of town, but I'll be there for everything.
I have a few things. First, I just want to say thanks to Paul and his team and for all the additional holiday decor throughout the city. And I noticed we've got some new trees here up at City Hall, those look really nice. A little overdue, but they look wonderful, thank you. I had the honor of attending the Nassau Longhorn Project Holiday Luncheon this past Saturday over at NASA on behalf of the city. Abys were also there, it was a really fun event, which also included the dedication and naming of their garden in honor of Dr. Sandra Mossman, which I thought was spectacular. She was honored for her effort and visionary to partner with the school district during her time as superintendent. So, congrats to Sandy and the Mossman family. Looking forward to a fun weekend, thanks to all the volunteers ahead of time. Did notice that the boat parade was not listed in the newsletter, but I think everyone is aware the boat parade is also on the list of activities this weekend. And wish everyone a happy and safe holidays. That's it.
There we go. I've got a couple of things here, is I don't know if people notice, but the city put out the "No Wake" signs for the residential waterways. So, it is now official, the signage is up, and I've actually noticed an impact. So, there are people who read the signage and it's begun. The other is, is I heard something, and I heard it at the Christmas party Friday here for city staff, and I hadn't heard this, but both Paul and Maria told me that the city staff is at full staff. We have no vacant positions whatsoever at City Hall. All positions have now filled, and from my gathering, everybody was shaking their, they can't remember the last time we've been at full staff, which I think is a great achievement. And I think that's great. I think it really helps out, particularly with the police force, so that the folks can actually take vacation when they're supposed to take vacation. It's more family oriented, that people aren't covering, and I'm just really glad that we got to that mouse, so that's a really, really important to me. The other is, what a great Christmas party for the staff. I don't know how many people went, but I think everybody had a really good time. I think it showed a really good camaraderie among people, and I appreciate that council was invited and it was fun to participate. So, good job, particularly Maria for organizing that. And then the other is, is just a comment, is I don't think I've seen this many light, lit up houses for the holiday season as this season. I mean, if you drive around Nassau Bay, not only have I made comments that I think the city looks better than it has looked in years, if at all, but I can't believe how many people have lights up. And it really adds to the whole, just, you know, ambiance of the city. So, hats off to the citizens, and that's my comments, and I'll move on to the rest of the agenda. The next is the consent agenda. This is, oh no, I guess I have the, I'm going too fast, I'm trying to move us out of here. These are reports from staff, members, and committees, city manager, sorry about that, Paul.
Thank you. We continue to work on the city and get it ready for the holidays. We make sure everything is lit up. James come in a couple of times early during the week, and I get constant comments from residents when lights are out, so we jump on it. And so, great Christmas party. Employees are getting ready to enjoy the holidays, and we're just going to just do a great job and make the city look great. That's all I have.
Police Department?
Actually, Chief Cromie is on vacation, and I do have his report. Uh-oh, thought I had his report. I may have to send that to you.
It's in there. How about if I help you here a little bit? Is there anything from the police report in there that the council would like to have questions on? Then I'd like to move on.
Works for me.
Fire Department? Rod?
Mayor, Council. Fire Department, we have 40 active members, 34 calls last month, we have 1,340 effort hours on the station. The latest project is beginning the public direct delivery to the boat. We have the boat back in the water, or after they were.
The collars are being done too, right? Not yet? I thought that was.
In place, we have proceedings.
Okay.
Must be into the boat or in the port.
Okay.
It will be in the water, the boat.
Thank you.
So, Sean is working tonight, but he gave me his report. They had 105 calls for the contract city, 18 calls in El Largo, 10 calls in Taylor Lake, Mutual Aid, one League City, one Pasadena, 10 in Seabrook, and 20 in Webster.
Okay. Code Enforcement?
Tony is working, and so, he was out, I think about a week and a half during the month of November, but he did send me a few high grass, roof permits, fenced trash debris. I know Star Stop, he gave, I think, one or two to them, and just been a little bit light this month.
Can I raise attention to the first home on Nassau Bay Drive as you come in? That is under construction. There is a number of plastic bags that are just thrown about, there's piles of stuff, there's loose trash. I'd like to get some eyes on that, because I think it's gone beyond, you know, what we should tolerate.
Okay, we'll take care of that tomorrow.
Can I also add, is the Wendy's sign within scope of our code enforcement? I don't know if y'all have noticed, but since Hurricane Barrel, it's been like this. I just drove through there tonight, and it's concerning to me that it's going to hurt somebody.
Yeah, I've got with Tony, so we'll be following up.
Okay, thanks.
And that fence between Akimi and Shipley's that I've been, I'm not trying to reveal how often I go to Shipley's, but it's really, really falling over.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I mean, it's just like, and it's all a total mishmash.
One of the things, maybe the police department could look and help out, because I know Tony's absolutely slammed.
We'll definitely take a look into it.
Public Works?
We had a major water leak at 18523 Barbuda. Our Parks Department painted the gazebo at Howard Ward and installed new lights. And the parks continue trimming trees around the city. The street department pulled the pump at the stormwater pump station B for maintenance and cleaning, and they also hung Apollo Dog Park banners along Nassau Parkway. And other than that, we've been putting up decorations and getting the city ready for the holidays.
I've had a number of people comment on those, the posters or the Dog Park signs, signage, looks good.
Thank you.
Oh, and that water main break was on Thanksgiving Day.
That's true, that's, it was, that's a good point.
I felt really bad when I heard that.
Yep, it was. Anything else? Yep. Special Events Committee, do we have anything there? I don't think anything. Other than we've got one big event, day of event coming up on the 14th. And then Parks and Recreation?
Okay, thanks. Yes, I just want to say Elias and Jose are rock stars, and they deserve a raise. They've been doing a fantastic job. The Howard Ward Park, like you said, they fixed all of the weeds there on that path. If you notice, that path looks fantastic now, and putting up all those banners, the Home of the Astronauts banners in anticipation of the Apollo Dog Park, and also the Moon Tree event coming in January. We got nine more banners coming in that are going to probably next week to go on the other side of Nassau Road 1, so they've been doing a really good job. And also, just everything around town that they've done. The tree trimming, saw that, and the park, they put up the golf cart signs, I don't know if you saw, you also painted, you didn't say that, you painted the sidewalks, thank you, it looks so great. If you go on the golf cart path, I mean, they're just doing such a great job. I mean, really, they deserve a raise, they're doing such a fantastic job, they do everything real quickly. So, the pickleball courts, the mayor has a preconstruction meeting with them tomorrow, and hopefully have that done by the end of December to repair the pickleball courts. We've got the merry-go-round going in, I'm not sure when you guys are going to have the, you have to get a pipe fixed first, right?
Relocated.
Oh, they're working on it today, so that way we can get that merry-go-round in, hopefully here.
If I remember, it's just a small pipe, it's just, it's a sprinkler line that just needs to be relocated.
So, it might be like within a month or so, so those two things are going on. And then we, this Wednesday, we have our kid event that goes on, our annual traditional kid event, where we're decorating wreaths, having cocoa with gingerbread cookies, and then light the tree and do some caroling like we did last year, so anybody with the kids, wanting to bring kids, we're going to do that on Wednesday night. And then we're going to be planning everything for the moon tree. I don't really have anything else. We'll probably have more in the new year, so.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks.
So, that event is for children, that event is for?
Yeah, it's for kids.
All residents, or?
Yeah, it's all residents, it's a kid event. It's going to be like kids decorating wreaths, having cocoa and singing, it's not for adults.
We went last year, it was a lot of fun. I was also going to mention, I was talking with Gary Mossman this weekend at the Longhorn Project, and I did not realize that the moon trees have expanded beyond just Nassau Bay, that they've gone into, I think, El Lago, maybe Seabrook, and he's going to look to get.
Taylor Lake Village.
Taylor Lake Village, so I think it's pretty cool, so, thanks.
The only thing is, I walked down to the park, and I believe the, one of the lollapalooie pines may have seen better days. I believe it's dead.
I think that it is dead, because I think it's from the saltwater when it flooded, and they were, actually, I think you guys put out like more mulch and stuff, but I was going to talk to her about replacing it, because they were supposed to be guaranteed, so.
I think she will, but I just, I want to get it on public record, is I saw just here this today, is it just does not.
Probably because it got flooded.
It bit the dust, so.
Yeah, it bit the dust. So, we're going to talk about that already, that's on the table, to get that replaced, because it was supposed to be guaranteed that they would grow.
Yep.
And so, we're going to add two in that same area.
Good.
Yeah, and that is something that people around the world beg for those, to get those moon trees put in, and we're lucky enough, we'll be end up having six of them.
Now, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, and let the record show that Councilwoman Tomasi is now here and accounted for. I'm glad to see you.
Thank you.
The consent agenda, there are four items. One, which is the A, which is consideration and possible action to approve the minutes of the July 29th, 2024 Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes, and September 9th, 2024 City Council regular meeting minutes, as well as consideration and possible action to approve the Economic Development Corporation's to approve the Economic Development Corporation's annual report for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and C, consideration and possible action to approve the 2023 annual report for the City of Nassau Bay reinvestment zone number one, and D, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2024-12-09-1, adopting a records management policy in accordance with the Texas Local Government Records Act Title VI, subtitle C, Local Government Code, and designating City Secretary Marie Rodriguez as Records Management Officer. Anybody want to take any of these items off, or is there any comments or any more deliberation that we need on these? Then I will call, ask for a motion?
I would move to approve the consent agenda, as is 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D.
Do I hear a second? Second by Ashley? Then I don't think there needs to be any more deliberations. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Passes five, nothing. Next is moving to old business, consideration and possible action regarding multifamily housing and public health. This is something I've had Paul put on here. It's basically, this is the work effort that's being done at the Sapphire, and I don't know if you have some things you want to add there, Paul?
Yes, so we had a really good meeting with the supervisor last week of Safebuilt, and they're moving forward with some things that we were talking about, particularly one with the chiller, a good inspection, and so they're moving forward on that. I have had no report from last month, or no complaints, and so I think we're doing really good.
The big thing there, I want to say, is that we had talked, we had instituted a policy that if there is a complaint, and we test, and that the mold, you know, specialist recommends remediation, that a permit will get pulled. So they're now addressing, I think, like 10 units that will need to pull a permit in order to be able to have oversight on those, which I personally like, because that's really gonna be the proof to the pudding is to fixing things. Okay. Any questions here? Then I want to move on to new business, consideration and possible action to authorize the interim city manager to sign a lease renewal agreement with Barrios Technology Limited. Did you want to go into that, or do you?
Uh...
This is for the guys downstairs?
Yeah, downstairs, yeah.
So I've been involved in this. This is just a re-upping, and I believe it's a three-year agreement? 22-year agreement for that. Did you want to talk to some of it?
So if you look on page, this is Consent 91, so if you look on page 68 of your packets, if you look at the fact sheet, so it's to extend the initial term of the lease for an additional 24 months. So from February of 2026 through January 2028, the base annual rent will increase from $21 per rentable square foot to $22.05, which is a 5% increase. And the landlord, which is the city, shall provide the tenant with the landlord construction allowance equal to $7 per rentable square foot for alterations to the premises, and that will go into effect fiscal year '26. And the tenant is granted up to four 12-month extension periods. And base annual rent for each interim extension period will increase to reflect the greater of the proportion cumulative increase in the consumer price index of any during the previous year, or the actual increase in costs incurred by landlord related to tenants' use of the premises over the immediately preceding year. Provided, however, no event shall the base rate increase by more than 5% over the prior lease year. And Dick Gregg and his team were involved in the legal review, and that's all. Any questions regarding this?
What I was gonna say is the key there is the price increase.
Yes.
There's also something else that I want to make mention, is that they, in order for us to get these, they have a main, they have an option that they can exercise with 180-day notice.
That's correct.
Coming up on the 2026 timeframe, if I remember.
That is correct.
Correct.
It's for that two-year.
So they would have to give us six months' notice relative to the extension as to whether or not they plan on staying. And also, how much did they use of the allowance last go-around? I think it was zero.
Zero.
They've given them the $7 before.
It was actually $5. It was increased to $7, but didn't use any of it.
And they didn't use any of it.
That's correct.
So I think this is something we should do. It's money for us, and I think they did well to negotiate. Do I need a motion?
I would move to authorize the interim city manager to sign a lease renewal agreement with Barrios Technology LTD.
Do I hear a second? Second from Paula. Any other consideration? Any questions here whatsoever? Then I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor? Passes five, nothing. Next is the consideration and possible action. This is the first reading of Resolution Number 2024-12-09-2, a resolution of the City Council of Nassau Bay approving the Workplace Empowerment Academy project that was created under the EDC Resolution Number 2024-11-20-1 in accordance with Local Government Code Section 505.158. Okay? This is a support for economic development. This is a workplace academy for individuals, and I see Jeff Burke, did you want to maybe make some comments?
I was already on. Yes, so I'm Jeff Perkard, I'm the president of Brideway International. We office here 1322 Space Park Drive, been in the training industry for over 15 years. We decided to meet a growing need of 16 to 24-year-old youth who were lacking not just basic skills, but the ability, once employed, to stay functionally employed, grow, and stay with the organization. One of the big challenges that organizations face is upscale workers, but also the revolving door. So we believe very strongly that we've created a process and a program that'll empower our local youth, not just to stay, not to become, not only to become employed, but also to stay employed and continue to grow as our economy grows and business continues to grow into the Nassau Bay area. We feel like it's a vital necessity to help, be able to provide a good, solid, quality growth for young people and for our community.
And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, you had a, quite a bit of a multiple six-figure grant from, was it the Walton family?
Yes, we were part of a workforce program from the Walton Foundation through the workforce, the Houston-Galveston Area Council, who we receive recognition from, from our work. And so we've been a part of the grant program. We did, had a very successful multiple six-figure...
The reason I mention that, some of y'all might have gotten an email from Glenn Venables, which I thought was a very good written email. The number one that he was not aware of there, that he worked with the Walton Foundation or the, and the, they've gone through a planning stage. They've actually had multiple years in regards to starting up. So from that standpoint, I think that that needed to be said, because that was one of the things Glenn put out.
Correct. And one of the things we also added, that you made a recommendation of, Councilwoman, was additional checks in there, and we've also partnered with an organization called GoToWork. It's a youth, well, it's a job placement agency that was built specifically for younger generations, because it uses a, an app format for dating that I'm not familiar with, and I'm married, so I can't recommend it or say anything about it. So it was designed for their ability to, you know, stare at phones and to be able to have job opportunities that are more in line with, instead of always like the LinkedIn's and the, you know, all the others, to give them resources to that. And we're gonna be partnering with them to continue to add resources to that application.
Could you also go into, because it's another one Glenn did, and it's just, he wasn't part of it, the partnerships you have and the working relationships you have with other teaching organizations, school districts, things along that line?
Correct. What we've also been able to do is not only just with those partnerships, but also with the local organizations, through churches, building relationships with those individuals to, and they've also been very grateful and welcoming to the opportunity for us to work with them. And then within our own building, it's been a really great opportunity for us to even continue to reach out to other local businesses and share some of the projects that we've been a part of. I mentioned before, the Work-Based Learning Program, which has been very successful. Be a great opportunity to also introduce local businesses to the fact that there's partnerships available, that they can hire these young people that are already gonna be well-trained, and they can use, in partnership with, resources like the workforce solutions to be able to give them short-term working opportunities to give them those continued skills. It's, we're really excited. I've been piloting it. I've had a number of young people. I shared at the EDC meeting last month, the young lady who's gone through that, and one of the things I asked her to do was give an honest evaluation. She's 19, she's right in the middle of that demographic. And the one thing she said that I noted and read was that she, at her age, was not sure that she would be able to apply for and be ready for the types of jobs. She thought she'd have to wait till she was in her early twenties before she would feel confident enough to be able to even apply for office-type or more business-type roles. And so one of the things I was really excited about was that she had commented that she felt more prepared to be able to talk with individuals of multiple generations now we're facing in the workforce, conflict resolution skills, and her ability to engage communication-wise, and understanding that there's different communication styles, and that helped her quite a bit, so.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to make mention here is, this is gonna be the case for all of the items that are coming out of the EDC, is there will be a contract involved that will specify terms and performance and things along that line, and any type of relocation or anything would necessitate the returning of the funds. So there will be a performance agreement, just as we do with every single item that comes out of the EDC. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, in the request that Jeff, that made with the Workplace Empowerment Academy, we called the actual labor portion of it. So many of these things are going into the actual physical assets, training items, things like that. I have a personal, you know, I should say, criteria that I don't think we should be funding labor. I think we should be funding the tools necessary, and you would be the ones that has to find a way to do the labor. So this does not incorporate any salaries, any support there. This is specifically for tools and facilitate the reach of the academy.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I was able to take the recommendations of the council from the first meeting that we had, and took all those into consideration, revised the budget based on recommendations of the committee, and so I was grateful for the opportunity to have it read again.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yes, ma'am. As I mentioned, that evening was a great opportunity to sit back and ask myself some questions I hadn't thought about the answers to, so.
And this passed the EDC seven, nothing. And I need, any other questions? Then I'd, I'll need a motion? It's, oh, you're right, correct. It's just a first reading. Appreciate the, yep. Thank you, Jeff. So this will hold over for a second reading. Yep. Next is the consideration and possible action. This is again, first reading of a Resolution Number 2024-12-09-3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nassau Bay, Texas, approving the date palm warranty project that was created under EDC Resolution Number 2024-11-20-3 in accordance with the Local Government Code Section 505.158. Paul, did you want to go into that?
Yes, so this will cover the 26 date palms, and this price, $31,200 was originally for one year, but I was able to negotiate for two years, so we're basically in a two-for-one.
Just to be clear for everybody, this was for the trees that were put in two years ago.
Yes, sir.
So we, if we are extending the warranty, again, for any catastrophic event to these trees, if you remember, we lost all 147 of them in a freeze. This is in order to be able to make sure that for any reason whatsoever, the tree doesn't even look like we want it to, they'll have to replace it. It's a full guarantee for those trees.
Is this costing us any money? They're just extending it?
No, no, no. It's costing us a little over $30,000.
I was gonna say, it's gotta cost us money. Yeah, okay.
The EDC's paying for it.
Why are they, I don't want to be their advisor, but...
Correct. But if you notice, there's one tree out there right now.
It's getting replaced.
That's getting replaced. And there's some of there that are suspect on, I think, Upper Bay for some of the smaller trees, not the majules, but there's...
The sables.
Yeah, so it's, to me, I value this quite a bit. Any further questions? Any modifications, or hold it over for a second reading? Yep, I'm gonna hold it over for a second reading. That's great, we're moving along real fast. Next is the consideration and possible action, again, first reading of Resolution Number 2024-12-09-4, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nassau Bay approving the date palm project that was created under EDC Resolution Number 2024-11-2020, dash 20-4 in accordance with the Local Government Code Section 505.158. This is for the last tranche of majule palms that we're planning on putting up. This is for the area, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, from Upper Bay Road down to Methodist Boulevard, or...
Actually, a little further.
A little further down.
About toward Lakeside, there'd be 26 trees planted there, and then from Nassau Bay Drive to Upper Bay, we have six areas that are kind of spaced out, and so we're putting one in between there. So it'll be a total of 32 trees.
Yep. So a little bit more than we typically, but this is to fill in some of the areas that are sparse. Any questions? Again, this is paid for by the EDC. Okay? Hold it over for the second reading? Any objections? And then last, and, boy, this would be a record meeting, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of 20 public safety radios through the HCAD by a cooperative government procurement service in the amount of $146,324.20, which is budgeted, I understand.
Yes. So if you remember during the last budget process, we added $75,000 to the $75,000 we put aside.
Correct.
So the $150,000 went out. Those will purchase 17 PD radios, which replaces all of their handheld radios. And then there's three other radios that are, and the main reason focusing on these 20 radios is they are out of, they're end of life, basically. They still work, but if something breaks, if a knob falls off, an antenna, you can't get parts from anymore. So we went through Motorola, worked with Webster and League City to make sure all of our radios are the same, all the specs are the same. There's a lot of new features on them. One feature that I want to bring up that is probably the most important feature of the radio, and I think all the officers will agree with me, is a thing called SmartConnect. So basically, the new radio, when we go into the hospital, or when they go in the hospital, or when we go into the apartments over here, our radios die. We can't talk. This SmartConnect feature will automatically sense that and switch to a cellular. So that's huge. That's probably the best part of the radio. So anyway, this is, we're ready to go. The order's in, I mean, the order is ready.
This is just the beginning, too.
This is only a quarter of the radios that we own.
Correct. That's what I wanted everybody to understand.
Right.
This is not, this is just the beginning of the stagger for the replacement of these radios.
Right. The biggest, we're gonna, we're gonna see big, right? These radios are like 7,300 apiece. NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, is now requiring that the fire departments, any firefighter that is in a hazardous area has to have one of their approved radios, and that radio goes for about $10 apiece. It's huge. It's big. So we'll look, we'll need to look at that in the upcoming budget when we get into that process next year.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom.
We'll order them tomorrow. Thank you.
I will need a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of 20 public safety radios through the HCAC by a cooperative government procurement service.